Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Texas Lutheran University. My name is Morgan Kleiser. I'm the Director of our Center for Servant Leadership here on campus. So, basically that means that I coordinate our civic engagement opportunities for students and try to help them get plugged in with what's going on in the community. So, we are really excited to have everyone here for our candidate forum tonight, which focuses on our city of Seguin and the Wadley County elections. And first, I'd like to thank all of the candidates that are out here tonight in the rain and checked out here to share with all of you about what their views are and what their things would be in the position that they are running for. I'd also like to thank everyone out in the audience for coming to campus. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. I hope that you are able to learn a lot from your listening and interacting tonight. Mr. Dabila did say we have note cards and pencils that after I speak, I'll kind of walk around with them and as we fill them out, just pull them up and get my attention and I can collect them for you. As a couple of housekeeping things, we do have restrooms that are out. You go into the lobby, the gallery area, there's some open doors that go into the interior of the building and there's restrooms in that hallway that you're welcome to use. We'll also have some cookies after the forum is over, so stick around to grab a cookie out in the gallery afterwards. This event is a collaboration between my office, the Center for Servant Leadership here at TLU and Community Forum, and we're very grateful to be able to bring all the candidates here for you. And I'm happy to now introduce our moderator for the evening, Mr. Eddie Dabila. He's going to be taking care of y'all tonight and introducing all of our candidates.
Thank you, Morgan. First, I'd like to personally thank you for coming out tonight and, you know, it's my pleasure to welcome you this evening, especially in this beautiful weather we're having out here, so thank you for that. But I'd also like to thank Texas Lutheran University for allowing us to use this facility. I don't think, I think this venue's great for something like this. Also, the Community Forum, thank you for partnering with the TLU Center for Servant Leadership. It's a wonderful event and the idea is to promote an informed vote and really just to facilitate a conversation with questions and so forth for your candidates. And I'd like to take a moment and thank you guys for doing what you're doing. It's not a, it takes a lot of nerve and a lot of guts to come up here and number one, take questions that you haven't been prepared to be asked, but to do what's asked of you as a elected official should you take that position. So, thank you guys for coming out tonight. One more housekeeping duty here is if you do have your cell phone, would you do me a favor and turn it down if you don't mind or put it on mute so that it doesn't go off during a question and answer period? I'd also like to thank the senator here for being our timekeeper. That's a very important part of this forum so that we can keep everything flowing and keep everything on track so each of you will have an opportunity to get your word across. Now, the way this is going to work this evening is we are going to ask a few questions that are prepared. And what we'll do is we'll gather the three by five cards that you have in the audience. If you have any questions, write them down. Again, it's, this is to get questions and answers for you as a voter. So, that's real important that we ask questions that impact your lives, Seguin's lives and so forth, and the county, Wadley County's lives. But you can make sure that your phones are on mute and what we'll do here is I'm going to each, I'm going to go down the line here. I'm going to make it pretty easy here. I'm going to ask, starting with Judge Custer here, we're going to, I call them, you have elevator people, we're going to give a little long elevator here. We're going to give you about six minutes to, right at six minutes, I should say, to number one, introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us why you're running. And, but I do ask that when that six minutes is up, I, look, it's uncomfortable for me to interrupt you, but I have to do it so that you can keep this thing flowing, so keep it right at six minutes. And then what we'll do is we'll go through the question and answers and keep those at 90 seconds apiece. But what I'd like to do is ask the judge to come on up here first and introduce himself and Judge Custer.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Pitzer. I'm the Wadley County Judge. I am unopposed this cycle, which means I do not have an opponent, but I do appreciate the invitation to be here for me to include me. It's important for candidates to get together, to talk about issues, collaborate, and hopefully have good ideas. That's ultimately how we best serve the residents and constituents of our city and our county. A little bit about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of Wadley County. Went to Navarro High School in Jeromeville, a graduate of this wonderful university, Texas Lutheran University. After college, I worked for the appraisal district as a member in agricultural appraisal. I ran for county commissioner in precinct two in 2010, was elected and began in 2011. And then I'm finishing up my first term as county judge now. And if everything goes well in November, I'll start, start the new term in January. I just want to give a little bit of an update about the county. Wadley County is a wonderful place to be and it's an exciting time to be in county government and government of all aspects. In 2000, the population of Wadley County was about 89,000 people. 2010 census, 10 years later, were about 132,000. We sit about 160,000 population today and estimated around 185,000 population by the time of census and redistricting is completed 2021. Some of the long-term projections show our county were from 290,000 to 350,000 people by 2040, 2045. Those are some pretty staggering numbers that are definitely going to impact how all of us, the city and the county, plan and make those decisions and basically what's going to impact the residents of the county. Some of the things we've been working on and focusing on, definitely have been capital projects, construction planning for growth. We've definitely been transportation minded and focused this year in the budget. It's the first time we committed half a million dollars for strictly for regional transportation projects. We basically put money aside and participate in the MPO, which is a regional transportation planning group that is going to impact our county and our residents for many, many years to come, long after all of us are gone, so it's something that's really important. Another thing that we committed to addressing this year was our radio communication system for law enforcement, our first responders. We have a 17 or 18-year-old communication system that is utilized by our sheriff's department, constables, our fire departments, and our fire marshal emergency management coordinator. We are now partnering with the city of Seguin and having really good conversations that have never happened before to look at going together to not only benefit those agencies I just mentioned, but to provide the best economical situation and get the best product at the end of the day. And I'm happy to say that the city has been wonderful thus far. We actually have one of our next meetings next Wednesday, so it's going to be something that's going to impact all of us for a long time. There's so many things I could give an update on. I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to say we're always welcome at the county. We always welcome you for any conversations, comments, questions, concerns, we're willing to help, that's what we're here for. We serve you, we appreciate you. If you ever need anything from us, please let us know.
Thank you, Judge. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Levens. Jim Levens is the incumbent, one in District Three for the city council. Now, he does have an opponent, Mr. Carlos Abilis, or Chris Abilis, I'm sorry. And Chris, unfortunately, had a prior commitment, but he did ask that I read his statement. And Chris would like to, and here's a statement from Chris. "I would like to take a common sense approach in our community affairs. I am running because I want to make a difference in our community. My platform consists of family, business, industry, progress, and growth. I chose this platform because each perspective is reciprocal to each other. Families make up the community and they also bring and make up business. Families also take part in the industries that surround and make up our city. Each corresponding family, business, and industry then allows for the city to progress into the future. The forward progress then leads to residential and commercial growth. Seguin can then continue to prosper and thrive. With this approach, I believe the way the life here at Seguin can be free and beautiful. With this sustainment and progress, I firmly believe we can give our community a chance to work, or give a future of age and security, and a positive future for our community." Thank you. Sincerely, Chris Abilis. And now I'd like to, Mr. Jim Levens, representing District Three.
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you to all who have shown up tonight for this candidate's forum. My thanks go to the TLU Center for Servant Leadership as well as Community Forum for sponsoring this. And although I can't go to the studio anymore, I want to thank my family and my wife of 35 years, Tracy, my teenage son, Alex, and somewhere out there, my, one of my brothers, Alan, who's an outstanding professor here at TLU. I thank you all for getting here. I was honored to win the election last year for the District Three seat. It was to fulfill the one-year, non-expire term of my departed friend, Phil Seidenberger. At the time when I won it, I made it clear that I'd be back again this year because I meant it for the long haul, one minute for just one year, that's for certain. So, I'm going to use this time to kind of tell you a little bit about who I am, what I stand for, and what I intend on doing in these next four years. For starters, I understand the Seguin community. Since moving to Seguin in the early 90s, I've been involved. I've been involved in the Chamber, I've been involved in service clubs, First Rotary, now Jeromeville Alliance. I've been involved in United Ways Campaigns here, been involved in my church, First United Methodist, Seguin Youth Services, Navarro Education Foundation, the old Operation Paintbrush, along the branch committee, I could go on and on. And folks, the purpose of being involved or the benefit of being involved is I got to know this community and form longstanding relationships. I understand manufacturing, having worked at Seguin Steel Mill, Seguin City for 22 years, and as we still makers would always say, Seguin is good for industry and industry is good for Seguin. I understand higher education and the benefits of workforce development after being with the Alamo Colleges for five years working in San Antonio. I understand servant leadership, both at CMC and at the Alamo Colleges. I taught leadership, I modeled it, and in my viewpoint, principal-centered leadership that I embody involves having vision, integrity, accountability, listening, mutual respect, and above all, a desire to make a difference. Service above self, that's the old Rotary model. A little more than 18 months ago, I sacrificed career goals and salaries to start a career in real estate in Seguin. In my job and in everything I do, I sell Seguin. I changed careers for several reasons. Partly, I wanted the flexibility to be able to help with the health needs of my mother-in-law and my mother. I wanted to be able to participate more about the school events, and I wanted to be more involved in the community. I'm a man of conviction, I'm genuine and I'm honest. Let's talk a little bit about our city. It takes historical perspective to appreciate the amount of progress that has been made over these past 20 years. And then a lot of that has to do with the continuity we have at city council and at city staff levels, at both levels. New library, new parks, continued revitalization of downtown. Progress, though, not as much as I'd like to see, is street maintenance. Solid economic development. We lead the state per capita manufacturing jobs in Seguin. We've had a lot of progress, and while we've been making that progress, we've kept public safety foremost and we have kept our tax rate relatively low. Our challenges moving forward are balancing the infrastructure needs of a 180-year-old city with the expansive growth that's on our doorstep. While we still have many streets and older subdivisions that are well overdue for maintenance, we're also preparing for over 5,500 new homes currently planted in subdivisions that are coming our way. We need to increase our progress in taking care of existing infrastructure while at the same time effectively managing the subdivision growth and adhering to our community master plan. The biggest concern I have is our need for retail growth, specifically on the west and the north side of town. Too many of our residents along Highway 46 find it just as easy to drive to the Bronfels for their shopping than to come into Seguin. We need to keep our sales tax dollars here, folks. Residents need to buy cars here and residents need to buy their furniture and clothes here. We need to support our existing businesses. We need to promote additional restaurants and retail to come here. If you look at our year-to-date sales tax revenue, it's significant, it's significant because it's going up, but it fails in comparison to surrounding communities. $6.7 million in sales tax revenue in ten months. The Bronfels is at $26 million. San Marcos is at $29 million. That has a very real effect, folks, because unless we can keep that, unless we can grow that, it's going to affect our property tax rate, and we'd like to keep that as low as we can. And also, by increasing sales tax revenue will help us increase city services. A year ago, I said I wanted to be known as a council representative who listens to and responds to the public. My record is solid in that regard. I also pride myself in developing good working relationships with city staff. I take pride in representing the best interests of both the Seguin and the Navarro ISDs. I work closely with the newly-developed HOA in our largest subdivision, Mill Creek. I'm pushing hard for increased customer service at City Hall. I took pride in helping to keep the matter poor on that water tower near Seguin High School. And I'm continuing to work on getting rid of Lake Yidawal along FM 78. And all along, I've always supported our police and our firefighters and all. My name is Jim Levens. I am the city council representative for District Three. I'm here today before you publicly asking for your vote to help me continue on this journey that we are on together. I believe in Seguin, I know you do too, and I want to thank you again for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Levens. So, next, we've got District Seven, currently held by Donnie Dodgen, I'm sorry, Donna Dodgen. And unfortunately, she is unable to run for another term. She's reached her term limit. So, now we've got, we're going to have Penny Wallace and Willie Mullin Jr. that are vying for that spot. If I can just throw him, come on up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'd like to thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It is a dark and stormy night. It is a privilege for me to be here and participate in this forum. My name is Bill Odom, and I'm running for the District Seven City Council decision. My roots run deep in Seguin. My family moved to Seguin in 1973. My dad was a teacher at the high school. My mom was a manager of the old Destiny's Crane Stamps store on Burger Street. Does anybody here remember the Destiny's Crane Stamps? I graduated in 1976 and I lived in Seguin through 1979. After that, I started my path in life, only to circle back to my own town. I returned to the family home on Elm Street in 2012. My passions are my kids, grandkids, and dogs. Depending on the day, that word can change. I always had in my heart to do one public service, having been a part of the Seguin Volunteer Fire Department in the seventies, serving as volunteering teenager for me in the eighties, earning a Texas Police Officer certification at the Alamo Community College in the nineties. Public service, however, did not become my career path. I had, excel, well, I was drawn to manufacturing and I've been in that sector to this day. I currently work for a manufacturer in San Marcos. I was very pleased when I saw that the city proclaimed recently the manufacturer of the day. I believe very strongly that I can make a profit without manufacturing base. Having spent 40 years in the sector, I watched the slow erosion of the US manufacturing that has caused major shifts to strengthen and strengthen the service sector, but the service sector itself cannot sustain an economy on its own. So, I'm very pleased and proud that Seguin has the highest per capita manufacturing point in the state. This is a solid underpinning to build a robust economy, which evidence everyone. As for my current interest in public service, it comes from a desire to be a good neighbor and a productive member of our community. It was sparked by attending, recently attending the Seguin Citizens Police Academy. By the way, I hope everyone is aware of the top-tier public service departments we have in this community. They are, and I've lived a lot of places in Seguin, one, when it comes to public service. I've seen many changes in the past six years that have been very positive. The growth of our manufacturing case, the development of new neighborhoods around the city, and the revitalization of the downtown area are all positive indicators for the city on the road. Although I wish Duke and Harris was still at the corner of Boston Court, it was my first job that I missed the role of five diamond stories. I've watched Seguin grow. I've also watched the explosive growth in the Bronfels, San Marcos, and other I-35 corridor facilities. My hope is that Seguin has the presence of mind not to jump on the hypergrowth bandwagon and instead play the longer game. I would like to participate in the continued preservation of our small-town charm. I would like to see controlled, steady, sustainable growth. I would like to be a respectful neighbor and honestly and transparently represent the citizens of District Seven and be their president of the council. I thank all the people that have stepped up to run from various positions in the city and are willing to represent their neighbors and the interests of the city. I'm looking forward to working with a productive group of like-minded citizens interested in serving the community. I would also like to thank the Community Forum and the TLU Center for Servant Leadership for sponsoring this event. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Ms. Wallace, Ms. Penny Wallace, for District Seven.
Good evening. I want to thank the Community Forum and the Center for Servant Leadership for putting on this event. It's very much appreciated. My name is Penny Wallace, and I'm a candidate for city council, District Seven. Just to start it out, I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I did grow up in Seguin. In fact, I lived the first 14 years of my life in District Seven, over on East Gonzalez Street. Rode my bicycle to Wyner Elementary. I graduated from Seguin High School and then went on to Texas A&amp;M where I received my bachelor's and my master's degrees. After I left A&amp;M, I went to Houston. I taught driver's ed there for one year and then quickly hightailed it back to Seguin. I taught at Seguin High School. I taught math and I coached for two years. Then, also during that time, my husband and I had two sons. We raised two sons here in Seguin. We now have four grandchildren. Got to say, the perfect, four perfect grandchildren. In 1982, I started working at Wadley County Regional Medical Center, and I have extensive experience there working with budgets. I've been the chief financial officer since 2002, so I bring a wealth of experience in finance to the city council. The thing I like best about working at Wadley County Regional Medical Center, though, is bringing people together to create something that didn't exist before. So, you may remember a little brown one-story building on Court Street. It's a different place now. I'm very proud of that place, but I'm not just proud of the building, I'm about the culture. It's a great place to work, it's a great place for physicians to practice medicine and for patients to see here. I have served on various boards. One is the Community First Health Plan in San Antonio. I've served on the Texas Hospital Association Pension Board, as well as a couple of professional organization boards. Working on those boards has definitely taught me how things get done in organizations. I currently serve on the City Zoning Board of Adjustments. This has been, I've been on this board for about a year, and this board has really opened my eyes to the inner workings of city government and really sparked my interest in working with city government. So, why I'm running? One is my passion for Seguin. I've already mentioned that I grew up here and my family grew up here. I do have the experience that I believe would add value to the council. And the third reason is I'm just interested, I'm wanting. My mission for Seguin is that it's a very vibrant community, a place where people want to live, work, and play, and a place where our kids want to live. When they graduate from school, I want them to want to live in Seguin. And they're going to love to live in Seguin if there's housing, if there are jobs, and if there's something to do. So, that brings me to a vibrant community. And what makes a community vibrant? I like the downtown development best. I like the revitalization of downtowns. I see it going on across the country and I think it's great. Fill those empty buildings. Put something downtown that people like to view so they will park their cars and walk and go from store to store, restaurant to restaurant, maybe art venue, music venue, and parks, library, and they'll visit each other. So, downtown revitalization is one thing. Another thing that we need in a vibrant community is both small and large businesses. We need to bring in those large businesses to bring in those jobs and to bring in outside investment. We don't bring in outside dollars, then we're just rotating the dollars that we have inside our city limits or sending them out, and that's even worse. So, we need those big businesses, but we also need small businesses. I think that the small businesses are the glue that holds it all together. It's the personality of a community, and we definitely need to support our small businesses. Another thing a vibrant community needs is that thing that sometimes we take for granted, and maybe we take it for granted because it's working well, but that would be law enforcement, fire, EMS, public works, parks and recreation, and so on. All of those things are important for vibrant community. What is the city's role in this vibrant community? One, the city council passes city ordinances that promote the health, safety, and overall health of citizens. Those city ordinances need to be based on common sense and best practices. They need to be communicated very well to the citizens and recommunicated very well, and they need to be enforced in a manner that is courteous and prompt. The city council also passes a budget, and so then, of course, it's very important to manage the public funds that are part of the city's revenues and then spend them in a way that will benefit that vibrant community. The third thing, I almost said it. The third thing is sometimes government just needs to get out of the way. And so, that sums up my vision for Seguin and if elected or not, I'm going to do all I can to ensure vibrant Seguin.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Next, we have, let's, okay, I'd like to do this. I know we're, we're going to be pressed for time, but I'd like to, because we're still in the city council jury, I'd like to call you up here, you know, line. Jeremy Roy is running unopposed for District Five in place of the late Carlos Madroni.
Thank you, Eddie. And Vicky for putting us together, and TLU for having us. It would be great if we could see y'all, or so we can't. Is that a way we can give the lights, huh? I might have a video on home ownership. I'm Jeremy Roy. There we go. I'm Jeremy Roy. Okay, they said I'm running for District Five and unopposed. So far, it's been one of the easiest things I've ever done, buying signs or collecting wood, so it's been easy. But I know the challenges are ahead, and I'm ready to meet them. I'm glad to be here. And I keep being asked, why am I running? Are you nuts? And the answer is, I guess so, a little bit, other than the fact that my life really has been about service. I'm in the ministry, and it's been about serving other people, and I want to keep doing that. There's just this deep sense that this is mine to do. I've been approached over the years, asked to do it, said no, more than once, and I just thought this time, you know what? I'm going to do this. I worked in the Bronfels at Resiliency Health Hospital. I worked at GRMC for nearly 14 years and then went over there to start a new ministry and start a new program there. I went with Mr. Haynes's blessing to do something new. It's been really exciting and it consumed a lot of my time. And all this community involvement, all these things that I was doing in Seguin, I stopped it. The library board and other... The library board and other nonprofits and helping agencies, I just pulled back. And this is my opportunity to jump back in, roll up my sleeves, get involved, and help. District Five includes all of downtown. I live just a block off the square there and I love it. There's so much happening. In fact, there are so many good things just happening in all of the county and in Saginaw, period. And it's just this desire to get involved. We've got a council that works well together. They cooperate with each other. I don't know if you remember, there were times back, you know, pre-Bedevan days where the council might have been, you know, had a little conflict. That is gone. It's, or at least reduced greatly. The city working with the county. Good things happening all over the place. I've driven all around my district. I walk it every morning and I walk nearly every street. They're all in really good condition. We've got a brand-new library in District Five. Mr. Madroni was a big part of all that good work in District Five. Walnut Branch, all those improvements. So it really, for me, is about getting involved in something good and doing my part. I grew up here, like I said. We moved here, I was about a year old. I went to Wyner, I went to Sager, went to Saginaw High School, and my kids followed the same path. Wyner, Sager, Saginaw High School. And they all graduated and moved on. And I think it's, I think it's my turn. I think Fonda would probably agree. It's our generation's turn to get involved and to serve. You know, an integral part of our ministry as a hospital chaplain involves serving as an advocate for the patient, standing between them and their family and administration and making sure all the right things are done. I'm a patient rights advocate in my role, and I think that's going to play into the job that I have as a City Councilman to advocate for folks. One of the things I'm the most excited, I love downtown. I love, there's five churches in District Five. There are several bars. I'm a Baptist, but I'm not that good a Baptist. I've got a bar there, too. But I love downtown, but you know what else is in my district? River, not Riverview, but Fairview Terrace is in my district, and so is Walnut Branch Towers, two of our housing projects. I've already spoken to Brenda Evans at length about how do I make sure that I'm representing them as well as I possibly can? Do they know that they're a valued part of our citizens' community? And so when I sit in that seat, Mr. Madroni's standing and so many others who stand, Danny Daniels and others, am I doing everything I can to advocate for them also? I want to be that guy. So that's why I'm running. I'm glad to do it, looking forward to serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Then we've got District Eight, Mark Herbl, who's running unopposed. Unfortunately, Mark had prior commitments. He couldn't join us this evening, but he asked that, he said, "Hey, it kind of worked out. I think it worked out for the best." They give the other candidates that do have opponents a chance to have more time to answer any questions they might have. Now, what we're going to do, we're going to move over to the county for Judy Coke. In her place, Jim Woberton will be speaking on her behalf. Now, she does have an opponent. She's challenged by Rebecca Tucker, who was unable to be here this evening as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. And for the record, I have not a twin brother, either. Anyway, Ms. Coke has been a county representative for sixteen years. She's in Houston, Texas, right now, continuing her education in the mandatory vice of Texas. I tell you, she's also the county representative for the tactical legislation. She's up there, she'll be up there, right, in two, three weeks, working with TAC to try to get all the bills that we need passed, passed. Once again, she regrets not being able to be here, so I'll be sitting there trying to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We've also got Jerelyn Bouquet for Precinct Two in the county, county commissioner. He's also running unopposed. Unfortunately, he was not able to be here this evening due to prior commitments as well. For JP Precinct Three, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three, that spot is currently held by Judge Roy Richard. He's not running for reelection. We've got Miss Notenolus that is unable to be here due to prior commitment, as well as John Torre, who's unable to be here as well. So what we'll do is we're going to get started with the question and answers part of our event. And again, for the candidates here, I do ask that we keep it at ninety seconds on your answer. It's uncomfortable for me to interrupt you, so please show courtesy to the other candidates here. But what we'll do is we'll start with the city. And, Mr. Oden, since you went first, I'm going to ask that Ms. Wallace go first in answering the questions, the first question. Now, Ms. Wallace, you mentioned that you were on some of these zoning, on the zoning board, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why? So it's a two-part question again. So if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
You know, the zoning board adjustment sits to hear variances on the codes that are in place. And most of the codes I have found to be very much common sense, but sometimes there are sort of circumstances where they don't apply and people can hear variances. And I think we have the most problem with signs. So I guess that maybe looking at the zoning ordinances on signs might be a good idea. There is a lot of controversy on, I need the ability to advertise my business, but is it blocking a view? Is it unsightly? There's quite a bit of controversy on signs, so that might be something I would want to learn more about, maybe change maybe one.
Thank you. Mr. Oden, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
I'm not as familiar with zoning codes as most of the people up here. To me, the zoning has been done very well. I can't imagine changing anything in the zoning when you have, I think, businesses and residential, I mean, separation. So I'm sorry, I just don't, I can't make anything that has changed. I mean, the direction that the city's been going has been correct. A lot of good decisions have been made.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Ms. Leavens.
Same question.
Yes, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
My father's tired of me talking about this, but one thing that I keep advocating, especially for our subdivision growth, is larger lots. Frankly, it seems like all of these subdivisions, all the subdivisions we're getting have the R1 designation or R2, which are basically about six lots per acre, so it's .168, which is for a lot. I talk as much as I can with Hannah Santino at City Hall to try to encourage her to encourage developers, but frankly, that's where it lies. We sort of have to go with urgency, as they know what sells, they know the price points, and frankly, the proof's in the pudding. If you look at a place like Mill Creek, that place is sold out. But I think eventually the market will correct itself and eventually we'll start getting subdivisions that have the larger lot sizes. That's something that personally I want to see. And that helps a lot with that subdivision traffic that sometimes those who live in those subdivisions aren't serving.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
Excuse me, what is a zoning code? No, I'm kidding. That's a joke. It's actually the thing, as I've answered that question, folks are saying, "Why are you running?" Then they followed up with their complaints, right? This is what you need to do if you're going to, and honestly, a lot of the complaints are around zoning codes, code enforcement, that whole department, inspections, building codes. I guess by nature, some of that's adversarial, but it's got to be done. Zoning has to change. This subdivision that's going on, I think, on Martindale, is that right? It all had to be resupped, right? I think it was commercial, not residential. It's all about growth. I think Penny's exactly right. It's about common sense, doing the right thing, what's called for. It doesn't make sense and going forward with it. I don't really like to change one thing. I think it's going to be case by case and looking at each time. What's going in here and why? Does it belong there? How's it going to impact the community around it? And yeah, common sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roy. So what we'll do, Mr. Roy, we'll start off with you this time.
All right.
So what are three priorities that you believe the city of Saginaw must address? And how would you address these three priorities?
Let's start with growth. It's been said, and it's worth saying again, it's got to be good, slow, steady growth, not fast, overwhelming, where we can't keep up with it. And that's got so many factors. The school district, it's why we get people like them to not get on the school board. Our schools are in good shape, they're performing well. All that leads itself to growth. And you can't do, you can't do growth without economic development. So we've got our SCDC, Josh Robinson, the president of that, they're doing all they can to pull people over that. I think secondly, it's going to be, and this I think is a pride for Saginaw, there hasn't been a tax increase. Property values have gone up, but taxes haven't. So go Saginaw, let's keep doing that. And then the third thing, Jim actually touched on, Ms. Leavens, it's the customer service is what goes, it's what goes on between, you know, town hall and the community. Do they feel like they're being served well?
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
You're welcome.
Ms. Leavens, what do you believe, or what are the three priorities you believe the city of Saginaw must address? And how would you address these three priorities?
Thank you, Jeremy, so that we could all have time to think. I'm not even going to limit it to three, really. Communication, relationships, customer service, those have all got to be involved. Communication with the county, communication with the school districts, communication with staff, communication with residents. We all got to be on the same page if we're going to manage this growth that's coming our way. And we can't fight the growth, we can't try to slow it down. It's coming, it's coming, guys. Customer service, yes. And I was so proud of the SMI culture that I kept my team on. I'm proud of what I've seen at GRMC, what I've experienced there. Customer service at City Hall is a must. But as far as the, if you want the actual topics, I would say the retail growth and neighborhood development, a lot of that goes through our planning and zoning area and economic development areas. So it's in those constant communications. What happens in executive session, we talk about how we're urging businesses to come into town. And let's don't forget about the existing infrastructure. I see your dad out there, your street on Trader is going to be addressed in about a week and a half. We can't forget about the streets that are already out there and what needs to be done. And my hope is it's going to be a long-term fix rather than a short term. So we've got, we've got to address the 180-year-old needs of this community.
Thank you. Mr. Oden, what are three priorities you believe the city of Saginaw must address? And how would you address these three priorities?
Again, it's going to get somewhat repetitive, I believe. Residential and commercial growth, maybe slowly, stay well thought out, common sense. We can overwhelm our infrastructure, we can overwhelm our public services, our expenses, and we do not control that growth. Support for public, continued support for our public service departments. We need to make sure that it's budgeted fairly and that we continue our support because they are outstanding departments. Some of the departments are really moving ahead in the state of Texas and we need to keep it that way. Infrastructure is really big, other than the story district, as does Penny. And roads, utilities, they need to be addressed. I know that we already started the three backbone streets, but now we need to work on the rest of the streets and pull them up. Moved here in 1973, I still have the same patches in front of the house that were there in 1973. And it's not just me, it's all everybody in that neighborhood, so that would be a priority.
Thank you. Ms. Wallace, what are the three priorities you believe the city of Saginaw must address? And how would you address these priorities?
One priority I would call recommunication. I think that we do a good job of communication. We put the word out there. But has it ever happened in your home when you told somebody something and they said, "You didn't tell me that"? Yeah, that's all the time. You did. Yeah. So it's that recommunication and it's remembering that we have to get that word out there again and again and again. And information isn't going to be exchanged until the people are given, but we just have to understand that and keep working on the communication. Saginaw needs to be open for business, and I think that's another thing that we need to really kind of figure out how we get to guess. And this is one of the things that I've heard from some of those smaller businesses in town is that it's easy to get to know, but it's a little harder to get to guess. And the businesses really need us to get to guess. So being open for business. And then I've already mentioned customer service and so have some others, so I'm going to pass on that. And I'm just going to say my biggest wish, which I know I'm not going to get because I've already asked, but I wish that people like the points could be varied.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Ms. Leavens. So we've all talked about growth, attracting residential growth, business growth. But what are your ideas for preserving, preserving rather, our community's unique character while promoting residential and business growth? So I'd like to know what your ideas would be to preserve our unique character while promoting residential and business growth?
Well, it seems like there's two questions there. So if you're talking about preserving this unique heritage that the city of Saginaw has, I mean, look at our city's namesake, Juan Saginaw. We were, I'm sorry, wait, that Texas Ranger Museum should be here. We're one of the birthplaces of the Texas Rangers. We're doing so much to capitalize on this history that we had with the Walnut Branch Park and the beautiful, beautiful library there. I think we need to continue that. I mean, just as a sidebar conversation the other day, when the school district was saying that those opportunities at Juan Saginaw Schools need to be sold out, my first thought was, well, we need to figure out a way to make that a part of the Walnut Creek Park. And I'd like to call personally, go up personally to the Ranger Museum and see if they will bring something down here to where Ranger Museum belongs and have maybe, anybody remember the old stables, the Ranger stables that go down in the Walnut Park area years ago? Maybe recreate something like that. But that's, that's the sort of thing, is capitalize on our heritage. And like we've all talked about, the downtown development, to really build on this unique heritage that we have. And I grew up in the Rio Grande Valles, I'm familiar with South Texas culture, so we have this blend in Saginaw, whether it's represented by Jaffrey Artists or some of the German community. So we need to blend and take advantage, kind of like a trip to Fiesta Texas, if you've been there. You know, and really capitalize on You know, and really capitalize on, on all, all the diversity we have in this area. As far as the second question, it was specifically about businesses.
We'll have to get to that later. That's okay, that's okay. All right, Ms. Wallace, let me ask you, what are your ideas for preserving our community's unique character while promoting residential and business growth?
We have some organizations in Saguine that are very committed to promoting our heritage. I think that we can assist them and, and build on what they're doing. That would be the Work of the Heritage Museum, the Conservation Society, um, those, the Art League is, um, they have a great project going on with a very old building and, and trying to bring back the old Klein Opera House. Um, I think that would just be an awesome venue, we could see that happen. So I believe if we can promote these nonprofits that are already working to, um, maintain that heritage, then, um, we, we'd have a lot of success there. I was thinking, um, when Mr. Leavens was talking about some of the different events that we had in, in the town the last weekend in September, the DSCS was postponed, so it was held then, and Oktoberfest was just down the street. So we kind of had our own little international, um, event going on, but we weren't really working together. So maybe we could work together, elevate one of those things.
Thank you. Mr. Oden, what are your ideas for preserving our community's unique character while promoting residential and business growth?
Well, I would mention the growth and manufacturing sector, the need for growth in retail. One of the things that hasn't been brought up yet is growth in tourism. We have the same river as New Broncos, and I've carefully developed. Uh, that could encourage a lot of tourism to the city. Uh, as it is now, we know that San Marcos and New Broncos have a lot of challenges uh, because of, uh, too many people, uh, along the rivers. And, uh, as far as like preservation of what we already have, uh, I think preservation of like a historic district, uh, encouraging people to, uh, rebuild all their homes, uh, discourage the teardown and building of new homes off of what's on the story and spread that out, basically burn that all. And, uh, as we know, the downtown district is, that development is fully underway and is outstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, let me ask you, what are your ideas for preserving our community's unique character while promoting residential and business growth?
I, I think we just did it, right? I think that's what happened with the tower. Um, there was a, call it an oversight, it wasn't on the agenda, considered the matador, but, uh, but the citizenry, they knew it was important. They brought it to the council's intention, not only did the council agree, but they voted pay for half of it. Um, I remember when I was a kid, we used to go, uh, pick up packages at, at the train station on, uh, Guanloopy, and it just went away. Uh, and that was all about growth, it was all about, uh, railroad owned it, but it was gone, torn down, uh, before we even, so growth was happening, but this historic building has disappeared. John Gesske is still grieving over that, uh, that building is gone. So it's about the community helping council stay aware, you know, that these buildings, this way of life, how we do things, something as simple as a matador on a, on a water tower, uh, we, we maintain who we are by, maintaining those things.
Thank you. So this is more of a county question, and I'm going to ask Judge West, just a quick answer. What do you see as the most pressing, or what do you see as most pressing? I'm sorry, let me rephrase, I can't read my writing sometimes. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? What do you foresee?
So, uh, you know, county is quite different than the city in the sense that counties are not allowed, you don't have zoning coverage. Uh, we have a lot of different areas, we focus on one area, I think, uh, with definite transportation. That's one way that a county, any county in the state of Texas, especially our county here, can have an impact on what happens with development. Planning for development, live, avoid, and preservation. We have thorough planning through the county which lays out planning and projected roadways and what they'll look like long into the future, once property is solely developed and having preserved that, uh, in place. And, and basically can, can definitely save quite a bit of money in the long term if that roadway needs to be expanded. That's definitely, um, one area that we need to focus on, we have, and we can continue to strive to improve that, that side. On the capital projects, uh, inside, we have managed minimal capital, construction projects in the county over the years. Uh, but one of the biggest things preparing for growth in our county has been the purchase of 134 acres directly across from our sheriff's office for long-term expansion and possible relocation of budgeting county departments, um, out to that, that property. There is definitely a commitment of the county to keep the courthouse in its location forever and never considered there. Uh, but there's also gonna be a need as downtown revitalizes and the county knows that, that we, we make a move for that. So that's gonna be a big focus for the county moving forward in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Wilton, I know you're speaking on behalf of Ms. Coe, but what would you say that she sees as the most pressing needs regarding infrastructure or capital projects within the county?
As the judge mentioned, and what Nagy failed to mention is that we have just entered into an agreement a couple months back for our master plan, which the county had kicked it around for years and years, but under the judge's guidance, we finally have one. And so you're gonna find out that people come and go, but this basic master plan would be the guiding light for Guanloopy County because we didn't know, we're crooked and we're running out of office space, and we were behind the curve for years on not getting buildings greened to, to house the county employees so we can service the people Guanloopy County.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is I'm gonna ask one more question. While we're answering these questions, if we can get the, uh, the MX cards up here with your questions. But what I'd like to know is, every one of you during the campaign has spoken just about every corner of the county, the city, and so forth. What have there been, what, what are they most concerned about? What are they gonna need to say, hey? How, what, and how can we address this? What, what has been the people's, your constituents' questions or most, uh, uh, pressing needs? I guess it might, I question. Did I, did I, I mean, does everyone understand, because I, I got myself confused myself here. But I just, you've all spoken, so I'd like to know what their major concerns are. Uh, let's move to the other piece, Judge.
Uh, most of the conversations I have with constituents, taxpayers, uh, it's usually two-sided. It's either people moving into the county, it's typically new residents who live out in unincorporated area outside of the city limits who want city-type services. And the county not only doesn't provide, but doesn't plan to provide because of the struggles and expenses that. The other side of that is you have a lot of long-term, um, county residents that lived out in rural agricultural areas of the county not wanting to grow. So there's really, very two-sided in many senses. Now, you have a lot of people that are in between, but, um, the, the concern and the questions and the lingering comments that come up with those two sides are very different. Again, one, uh, wanting those services, and the other, other saying, leave us alone, or we're growing, so what can we do to help? Uh, the challenge for us as a county is to, to, of course, use information and common sense to try to make those decisions that are in the best interest of the taxpayers. But we understand that we have to represent people that live in the city, people that live outside and want those services, but also try to do our best to help preserve agricultural and rural heritage in the county, which is still a really big part of our county.
Thank you, Karen. What about you? Go ahead, Mr. Leavens.
I think probably, I don't wanna talk too much more about infrastructure needs as far as streets, but, but that is what I often hear. Uh, the worst quote in town is the road that's in front of your house, where you, uh, that's kind of what I, I get quite often. The thing is with the city, we have a limited budget, and, uh, one thing we do, we also have a very logical approach to the way we handle the city streets, whether it be through the EVO projects that the judge mentioned earlier, whether it be through the zipper equipment that we, we have and the grid we have to restart the streets. Uh, it's a very logical approach that every single block in this city is chronicled, is put in a database, and, uh, every district benefits from what we can spend. Uh, I do, I do also hear quite often about taxes. Uh, at 54.4 cents on a hundred-dollar valuation, guys, our city taxes are actually very economical. Um, City of New Broncos is a little, is a little less at 48, San Marcos is at 61, San Antonio is at 55, Huelix at 71. So we're right in the middle of that. And I gotta tell you one thing that, that I'm gonna tread lightly on moving forward is I would like to, because this, this is about a 40-year arrangement that we've had with GRNC as a city-county-owned institution. And I, I don't wanna necessarily say we have to change that, but I'd like to see people from the county, the city, and the hospital get together to start exploring if there's other ways to maybe fund that hospital down the road. Because out of our 54 cents, uh, on a hundred-dollar valuation, that represents about eight cents of that. So without that, our tax rate really would be around 46 cents.
Okay, Ms. Leavens. Ms. Wallace.
That, that money that goes from the hospital pays for anything you care.
Okay.
All right. I too, Mr. Leavens, was gonna mention the streets because that's what people say to me the most. But I'm just gonna go to number two, uh, because, uh, the streets have already been mentioned. And, and that is, um, inspections. And, um, I, I've heard some people say, you know, I'm just gonna leave the light switch a little crooked so that inspectors can find something wrong and then we're gonna do it. Okay. For some reason, I, I don't know what it is about inspections that, um, are confusing to the people who need inspecting. And so maybe a little bit more transparency in, uh, that area would be beneficial.
Mr. Oden, as a current candidate for your district, you've likely spoken to many voters, constituents, and so forth. What are the key issues that you've heard? How do you plan to address these issues?
Well, not being an incumbent, I haven't had that much exposure there really, but talking to neighbors. Um, it is people, it's just a natural human tendency. It's what they can see, touch, feel, what they see out the front window, uh, what they, when they sit down at the end of the year and they have to write out a check. You know, so taxes, those things are very important. I know we've mentioned them several times, but they are probably the top two priorities in any tax payer's case. Education is another as well.
Mr. Roy?
As a judge, you feel as if we have people that are just moving here, they came from our cities, they want us to install sidewalks, streetlights, underground sewer, you know, things that make sure the county doesn't have to cook or do we do. And then you get the people that have been here for a long time and say, hey, don't change anything, keep my taxes low. But the only thing that they really want is better fire in the house. And we're working on that now through the fire marshal. But, and then when you start talking to the people in the cities, they say, well, how can the county partner with us? I gotta go over this way, we really don't have a lot of money. So that's when they sit down with commissioners and they say, hey, what can you do to help us? And most times it's an air-to-air agreement, they'll work with the cities, that we supply the labor equipment, they go ahead and buy the material, and we rebuild the roads. It's worked out in the past and it continues to work out. But they just want us to be there to help them. Even when they, they bring in businesses, they come to us asking, so what can you do to help us land this large company coming inside with it? As a big, with category. It's like, we don't always give them all that they want, but we make sure that we're working with them day in and day out to bring the best possible businesses to the club of the county.
Thank you. Mr. Roy, as a, as a current uncoast candidate, you've likely spoken to many voters, constituents throughout your district, and I'm sure outside your district. What are the key issues you've heard and how do you plan to address these issues?
The main, the main thing I've heard, um, is related to that one department, uh, dealing with inspections, planning, zoning, code enforcement. Uh, I was kind of surprised, maybe it's, it's been often, uh, that I've heard about it. And then, but then you, you go down to the city hall, you talk to, you talk to the city council members, they're doing a good job, and they're working hard, they're good people. Some of them have lived in Saguine their whole life, Tommy and Shimmer. And yet there's this perception, what's that about? Uh, it may just be about education. I mean, I myself, uh, need to be educated on how they do things, why they do things. Uh, some things have to be that way. I remember working for Daddy and, um, Johnny, uh, Johnny Adam would show up. You felt like you were working with him, right? He was helping you get the job right. Um, and for some reason, it feels adversarial today. I don't know what that's about exactly. I, I think it is, I think at the core of it is good communication between that department and the buildings and the community, the different ones. Cause those complaints have come from even churches, I talked to a pastor the other day. Felt like their whole, this building project, they haven't been held up by that department. So how do we help that church understand why it was held up? So I hear a lot about it.
Thank you. What we did is I've got a couple more questions. Uh, if you're interested in writing a quick question down, please grab one, get, grab one in, write your question down, and then we can get it in here. Uh, I do have a couple more to ask if we have time. But, um, the city, we've seen the city invest in Saguine Animal Shelter for the last five, six years. We've seen, uh, we're, we're seeing them invest in planning and environmental building that, that right down the street from City Hall. We've also seen a new library through a bond package, some improvements to the, to, so the parks in town. What do you, when, when voters or constituents come to you and say, where is the money for the, for the roads? Where is the money for the drainage? Where is the money for the, uh, infrastructure? What are your answers going to be? Yeah, sorry, I was going to, we're just gonna go back this way, sorry about that.
Fonda Smith and I were just, Fonda Smith, Fonda Mathis and I were just talking about that. You know, I mean, there's certain things that are budgeted, right? Uh, that whole, uh, out on North Austin, the whole utilities facility out there, that's being paid for by utilities, by utility money. So, uh, the library was a bond this year, um, down the list, they differentiate. Then comes maintenance, then there's your general budget and, and maintenance. I mean, the money comes from where it comes from, right? Money is set aside for certain purposes, and that's what it goes to. Those big ticket items that are gonna cost a lot of money, I think most often, constituency has given the opportunity to vote approval. Uh, first, my dad and I were on the opposite sides about the library, but now he loves it. He hears all these good things about it. He's like, that library turned out really good. So, um, the money comes from where it comes from.
Mr. Roy. Mr. Oden.
Well, the city is, is very transparent, the budget is available to anyone. If they have a concern, uh, I would encourage anybody and everybody to contact whoever they need to in the state, from the mayor of city council, any of the specific departments. Uh, in my experience, everybody is very friendly, very helpful, uh, and that I think they would be more than happy, uh, to, to answer questions of where the money is, where the tax money is going. Um, I have personally seen, I mean, and it's very apparent to whoever looks, uh, where the money is going uh, in, in so many different ways. Uh, we have outstanding, uh, public services, they really are very, very good public services. We have outstanding public services, they really are very, very good public services here. The infrastructure, I mean, I would like to personally see more money go under the infrastructure, and I think that's going to be very important for growth in the city.
Response.
Okay, so the question is, where is the money going to come from for continuing to increase the streets?
We've seen the city over the last five, six years invest in the seeing animal shelter, we're watching them put money into planning, at the state planning and environmental building. We've passed a bond package to address the library needs, some of the upgrades to the park. What is your answer going to be, I guess, that's what I ask, when your constituents come to you and say regarding infrastructure, roads, drainage, and city needs? How are we going to address that question?
You know, budgets are really easy, it's just like at home. It's just that with the city, there's more zeros. If you can't pay cash for something that you really need, you have to borrow the money. And the way we borrow the money is we issue bonds, we sell bonds. Our city has a very high rating with the rating agencies, which means they're in very good financial health, so that means they do have the ability to issue debt. But you just have to, you just have to weigh, just like you do at home, how much more can you add right now, how much more debt can you add to the conference right now? And that's just balancing act, and that all comes with a budget.
Thank you. Mr. Leavens?
I think I'm going to borrow Penny's term balanced. We've all talked about a vision for this community, our vibrant community, and it takes a balanced approach. It's not all about roads. You have to have the parks, you have to have the pocket facilities. I'm very proud of that new library, I'm very proud of the new animal services shelter. If anybody looked at the old one, down at the end of River Street, that was a dungeon, that was a dungeon. We had, we had to improve these facilities. We shouldn't question the need to improve these sort of facilities in this town. And actually, former Mayor Mathis and former Councilman Shek, he could probably tell you better where those funds came from. I believe those funds were set aside years ago as a firm real valance, I forget exactly where those funds came from for those projects. The only issue really on this was the library, it was part of the bond issue. So we've got to have a balanced approach, which includes a good hospital, I want to clarify, I wouldn't pick it on the hospital earlier. We've got to have a balance to have the vibrant city that we all want. We want to be proud of where we live. We want people to come to our town, to drive our streets, and believe me, as a Realtor, when I drive people through this town, and they drive down one twenty-three, and they see that beautiful landscaping, and they see the downtown, and they see that beautiful library, and they see the animal services shelter, they say, this is the kind of place I want to live. It's exactly what we're talking about. So sorry if it sounded like I'm hitting a hot topic here, but guys, this is important. We want that balanced vibrant community, and it does take money.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out today and answering these questions, and you all kept the flow, guys, and you all. I didn't have to interrupt you anytime, so thank you. I guess what we'll do here is we'll go down the line, give you sixty seconds each, and tell me exactly why, you know, I know you're running unposed, Judge, and several of you are, but tell us why you believe you're best fit for the job at hand, for the task at hand.
It truly has been an honor to serve as county judge. I've had the unique opportunity to serve with multiple county judges, to work with a commissioner's court that has been truly supportive. Even when we disagree on the topic, we've been professional. There's been collaboration, I think, between the county and all the cities and different organizations that have come together to help us move forward to a place that we really haven't been as a county before. And it's, it's a great feeling to be part of something that's more important than yourself. And that's what I feel like I'm a part of. You know, when I worked as the president of the district, a big part of my job is sitting with thousands of taxpayers discussing their concerns. That's what drew my interest to public service, is because I wanted to help. I didn't think that one little special group of people should be the only ones that got support or got focused on, and I thought everybody should be treated the same, and that's what I try to do every day. And I'll be honest with you, some people don't like it, but we work really hard to treat everybody the same way, give them the same type of support. And again, just want to thank you for putting this on, thank Texas Luther for everything you've done, and thank you to everybody up here for your willingness to serve. Appreciate it.
Mr. Leavens? Yeah, so you did, tell us why you, why they should vote for you, what, what is the, you know?
Well, tell us why they should vote for you at this point, I feel like we've covered it a little, you know? Guys, I've been in this job listing here, people told me when I took office that it takes a year to learn the job, and I feel like I'm way ahead of that curve. I am in City Hall frequently, this is a part-time job, well, not, you know, it's paid like a part-time job, it's maybe less than that. I'm treating it more like a full-time job, guys. I have, I have a position in the career that affords me some flexibility. I spend a lot of time in City Hall. I'm listening to people. I advocate for what I think is, and what we've all said, is common sense. I'm willing to ask questions, even if they're unpopular questions such as about hospitals. I want what's best for this community. I liked what somebody said earlier, I want this to be, I think it was Penny who said this, I want this to be the kind of place where Alex, you want to live here when you get out of college or whatever you choose to do, but when you choose your career, I want you to think this is a good place to be, mom and I would like you close by too.
If elected, I would have a commitment to do my homework. As the ordinance, many ordinances come before city council at every one of the meetings, and it requires work ahead of time by those council people to know what they're voting on and why. I would make that commitment to do my homework, understand what I'm voting on, and if I don't understand, then I'll ask questions. And I want to get to the common sense, best solution for the city. Also, I'm available. I am, I am available by telephone, by email, I'm out and about in the community, involved in very many different events, and I think very approachable and willing to visit with anyone who would like to visit. Then I have one favor that I would like to ask of you, and I know you're going to vote because you're here, but maybe share with your friends the reminder that there were people that came before us that struggled greatly for that right to vote, and that's something that we shouldn't take for granted, we should vote.
Thank you. Mr. Leavens?
This might have been a unusual election in this season, because Ms. Wallace and I agree on very, very many things. I would like, I will, I, I'm willing to say I would be a better councilman, potentially. I think it's a testament to everybody that's on this stage, that they're here, they have the desire to serve the community, they're all very interested in it, very invested in it, and I want to be a part of that, I would like to be a part of that, be a part of the team. I'm excited to be a part of the future of the county. I think my four years in business, in fact, I've been a half of it, I've helped everyone in the industry in manufacturing very well, and we are on that path to build that base even further. I'm a quick study, I agree with Ms. Wallace as well, that I would study, I would spend a lot of time studying the issue and ask a lot of questions. And I'm, I'm just very, very proud of the city and this community. I was gone for many years, came back, and to see the changes that have already happened is very exciting for me.
Thank you, sir.
Well, on behalf of Ms. Coe, she's been fortunate to be voted in, she's in her sixteenth season, so she's, I guess, the most proud of, she's been halfway there, she's been able to take care of all the roads for herself. She's been a team player, when she needed to give up some road miles to another commissioner, she's been able to do that. We all work quite well together, Ms. Corrigan, the guy that sent the judge's picture, he's an excellent judge, and we're all, we're all just together, and we all work together. Ms. Coe is a team player.
Mr. Leavens?
My son's a student, Austin at A C C is taking a government class, and he was assigned, the assignment was to interview someone that was running for either state, county, or city government. Just turned out his dad was running, so, so he was writing this paper about my campaign, which is kind of funny to me. But he, he wanted to interview some folks that I knew that were involved in city government, and I talked to them, and he interviewed Robert Haines, who's on the S D C board, and this is going to sound self-serving, but Robert complimented me, he said, Andy, your dad is one of the rare guys that, he doesn't really have an agenda, no one to put him up to this. He's not representing just one group, he's representing all. Your dad has always had a heart for service. Those aren't my words, those are Robert Haines', I worked for him for fifteen years, and really, so there's no convincing I have to do, I'm unposed. Both of these, I'm the only guy on the ballot, but I really am doing this just because I love this town, I miss being involved, and I just want to say.
Thank you. Again, pleasure to talk to you, thank you for coming out tonight, I really appreciate my hat off to you for taking the time out of your evening to come and join us this evening. The candidates, thank you for answering any and all questions that we threw at you, and again, T O U for the facility.